Good evening. I would like to call the regular work session for Rockdale County Public Schools to order. Before we approve our agenda, we would like to have a moment of silence.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman, Vice Chairwoman Brown, to our board members and our executive cabinet and our guests. Tonight, I would like to begin with a moment of silence for one of our RCPS family members we have lost recently. Specifically, we remember Sandra Waits, a longtime employee in school nutrition at Lorraine Elementary. Ms. Waits began working at Lorraine in 1996 when the school opened and spent all 26 years serving the students, staff, and families of Lorraine Elementary. We send our sincerest condolences to her family and friends and ask that you keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Let's observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as posted?
Second, Akeeta Palmer.
I have a motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. Next is recognizing visitors for comments, and we do have a couple of visitors. Before you come up to speak, let me read our policy on that. This is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, or rude or slanderous remarks, or becoming boisterous. First is Mr. James Zinko. Feel free to adjust the mic if you need.
Can you hear me okay?
Okay.
I come here tonight, we have some issues. My daughter goes to High Tower Trail Elementary School. She's fourth grade, and we have, my daughter has some problems with her teacher. She calls bullying. We have tried to address the issue with the teacher through virtue for the link that the school gives, you know, takes them back and forth, can't really get replies. Tried to set up meetings with the principal, Principal Samsung, can't never get in touch with her. So our next choice was to go to Board of Education. My wife made one call, kind of told them what the issue was. Immediately, Principal Samsung called her back to set up a meeting between her, the teacher, and my wife. The meeting was never made. It was going to be a virtual meeting. We never got a call back. That was supposed to have been yesterday. This morning, my wife called the school back again to try to reset up this meeting. She couldn't get in touch with the principal or anything. You have to email her because you're not really allowed in the school. So we're supposed to get a call back, and it didn't happen. I've got, I mean, we take a list of things. I mean, my daughter, this past Monday, didn't even go to school after the break because she's so afraid of her teacher. My daughter is in the gifted classes. It isn't like she's just making, just barely making it along. I mean, she's in, she's taking tests to make the school look good all the time. Her teacher is the gifted teacher, but it's just, I don't, I mean, she's just doesn't, she makes comments about how much lunch my wife decides to send my daughter with. Says that my wife sent her too much lunch. I mean, gets loud. I mean, gets loud, screams at her, screams at other kids. I mean, there's other kids in the class that she gets loud, verbally loud with. And I mean, I mean, it was fourth grade. It ain't, you know, it's third grader no more, but still, I mean, you know, show a little respect to the kids. I mean, my child is afraid to go to school. It's a problem. And we can't go inside the school and talk to anybody face to face about anything. And so I made a call to a friend, and he suggested I come to the meeting tonight to voice my concerns. I don't know how long her teacher's been an employee of Rockdale County Schools. I think she came from DeKalb County or some other county. She hadn't been with the county very long. But, I mean, my daughters, everybody knows her. She's liked by everybody, teachers, students, everybody. And this one year is just, it's been, where she ain't like to go to school anymore, which isn't good for somebody that's been gifted for several years. I mean, she was part of the TNN, of the school, you know, news that they have, they make the YouTube channels. I mean, everybody knows her, everybody likes her, but this year, she's serious.
I am so sorry. Thank you for expressing your concerns. Dr. Oates will have some, or he himself, or someone to follow up with you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Next.
Chairwoman, if I might, and of course, I, obviously, the rules and the procedures that we read clearly indicate that we typically don't respond, but I want to speak more broadly, not necessarily in direct response to what Mr. Zinko shared. And, but just want to make the point that we want to make sure that if, in fact, there was not sufficient response at the school level, then it's important for our parents, and I'm speaking generally, even though what prompted, this is what Mr. Zinko shared, is to make sure that you speak with, after attempting to speak with the principal, we do have an assistant superintendent who is assigned to each of our elementary schools, and I know that that's Dr. Nadine Campbell for, for High Tower Trail Elementary School, because they support and supervise, however, the principals, right? And so she would have been the next one, but I realize that parents don't always know that.
Right.
And so I'm speaking generally, the assistant superintendent, there's two for elementary schools, and each of them has a caseload of elementary schools that they support and supervise. There is a middle school assistant superintendent, and then there's a high school assistant superintendent. And that would be the next line of contact after, if you did not feel that the issue was sufficiently addressed or resolved at the, at school administrative level. So that's just for future reference, and we're speaking generally.
Right, right. We just didn't ever go, we've never had issues. I mean, it's just, and we just figured to go to Board of Education. As soon as we went to Board of Education, the principal wrote us right back, I mean, called us right back, like, to handle the situation herself, was like, okay, great, this is going to get addressed, have a meeting, fix everything, but it never happened.
All right, so we'll follow up with you with further guidance, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Mark Flowers.
Greetings, board members, and thank you very much for your time. And if you'll indulge me, I might go a little over, if that's okay. I hope that's okay. I hope you'll indulge me on that. But let me begin by thanking, thanks so much, Dr. Oates. Let me first begin by saying thank you to the bus barn. My son recently left his violin in the bus after a sporting event, and they had it back to us by 6:00 a.m. the next morning. So thank you all very much for that. That's awesome. Like, he called us like 9:30 that night, was like, hey, we'll search for it. So thanks for that. I'm here today because I have a concern beyond just being a parent of two students within the district. One is, I'm a college educator, and something that we've noticed for a long time is the decrease in the readiness of students who enter our classrooms. And it's always a question of why. Is it just, it's not just Rockdale County. This is more like a statewide, maybe national thing. But nonetheless, we always ask the question, why? And we try to address that. Recently, I was, I encountered something with my own son in Rockdale County, which sort of opened my eyes a little bit. So in our classrooms, we always talk about the fact that many of our students have never taken a class. They don't really understand on how to do note-taking, something as simple as note-taking that we should be teaching them in a high school. They really don't have that skill when they reach my level. They don't necessarily take the initiative. They don't go out and read their textbooks on their own. They don't seek extra information, and it's because they were never necessarily encouraged to do so at the high school level. They've never learned how to properly study and how to practice their own materials for lots of different subjects while they're in high school. So they, when they come to me at the college level, they're just not prepared. So it always raises the question, why? Why aren't we doing this at the high school level? So I would pose the first question to you guys. What are we doing in Rockdale County to address these three issues? The next one is the concern about the reliance on digital content. Digital content's great, offers us the ability to provide homework, give them dynamic homework. They can go directly to the book while they're doing homework to the section in the book that's relevant. I use digital content in my own classrooms, and I know that's why we do it at the district level. However, recently, my son came home and told me he got a B on, on something, which is great. I'm happy he got a B. That's excellent. No problems with a B, right? Except that whenever I said, could you have done better? Did you read your textbook? Did you read your chapter? He said, what chapter? What textbook? And I said, I'd get that you probably don't have a physical textbook, but do you have a digital textbook? So we went to a syllabus, no digital textbook. There was a book on the syllabus, but no access to it when we tried. Searched for two other classes, exactly the same problem. So three classes, including economics, including history, and including chemistry, no textbook was available for the student. And because it's a digital copy, they can't just crack the book. And it raises the question, we always try to address socioeconomic differences. A family like mine, I had a textbook from my college days that I gave him for history. I brought him an economics textbook, textbook from what I teach from, and I gave that to him, and I assigned him reading. But why aren't the teachers assigning readings?
Sir, I'm gonna have to stop you here. Unfortunately, your, your two-minute time is up. Three, I apologize, but yes.
Well, that went by really fast.
Yeah, that, I thought it did, too.
Okay, would you, would you indulge me a few more moments?
But what we have is, you provided the board with the information that you like to, for them to consider, so.
Well, not exactly. I kind of need to explain some of it, though. I mean, I understand the three-minute rule, and I'm not trying to be a hard person to get along with, like, I really, but some of these things are complex, and I just.
Mr. Flowers, let me say, I'll, I'll reinforce what, what Mr. Flanagan has said. And part of the issue is, is that if you note the rules that we shared, when there's information that's being shared that really should be addressed at the school level and following that chain of command at the school level through to the assistant superintendent and the like, those issues are not designed to be litigated or discussed in a three-minute whole public comment, period. And that's the issue you're running against, is the nature of your concerns are not aligned to what this, through these three minutes are devoted to. But you have given us the information, and there will be follow-up with you. I can certainly direct, I think your son is at the high school level.
Yeah, I tried to reach out to the school today, and she directed me, not even for a 10-minute conversation, directed me to the district. She wouldn't even talk to me.
Right, well, my understanding is you've addressed, you have, you have addressed your concern at the school level initially about the, the access to a textbook, correct?
Yeah, faculty, faculty don't respond to email.
So the, so the next line would be to speak to Dr. Sherri Freeman, who's the assistant superintendent for high schools, and I'll direct her to, I know I have your information, your contact information.
Yeah. Could we address the second page, which is separate then, which relates to the last, from last month, that we were, two months ago, that nobody ever?
No, the, the three minutes have expired, so we will, I will be having Dr. Freeman contact you tomorrow to give, to schedule a meeting with you. It could be phone, or it could be in person, so that she can address all of your concerns. She supervises the high school principal, so she is the person to speak with.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I can do that.
And that would be information that Dr. Freeman would be addressing, because obviously, that's the issue that, that is for the staff to address. And if there's anything for the board to be aware of, I certainly will be the person to share that with them.
One quick note before I step away. The textbook issue aside, because faculty, I mean, the district provides the presumably access to that, but Spanish instruction at the elementary level was, they lost access.
Sir, again, I'm gonna have to cut you off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's cabinet updates. First would be Office of Teaching and Learning with Ms. Kelly.
And Chairwoman North, as Ms. Kelly takes the podium, we know that we have some new mathematics standards, and she's going to be enlightening us on that. So we look forward to that.
Yes. Good evening, good evening, Ms. North, Ms. Brown, board members, Dr. Oates, cabinet members, and guests. Yes, so Dr. Oates is correct. Tonight, I'm here to give you some exciting information, some exciting updates in the world of Georgia mathematics. And we have our vision and mission posted here, because as I go through the presentation, you will see some connections to how the new Georgia standards will support the mission and vision. So our new K-12 math standards, they will be implemented next year in the 2023-2024 school year. And we will be successful here if by the end of my 15, 20-ish minutes, you can explain the reason why, why we're moving to new standards, explain the big shifts that are gonna happen, and identify opportunities for access in the new pathways, one of my favorite parts. So thinking about where we've been and where we're going, acknowledging the past and moving into the future, here's some of the shifts we've had as far as our standards are concerned in the last few years. Any notices, any wonders? A lot of changes, yes, sir, a lot of changes, right? Why is that? Well, the DOE, they believe that we want our kids to be college and career-ready, and the standards we have in place right now is not really preparing that for, for that, right, preparing them for that. So we want to ensure that each learner is a prepared, numerate citizen, ready to enter the force, right, workforce with those critical thinking, reasoning skills necessary for success in both local and global workforces, right? We want the 21st century skills. We want them college and career-ready. And the DOE has provided a quick video with the update on our new standards.
Georgia has adopted new K-12 math standards. What does that mean for you and your child? The new standards are more age and developmentally appropriate, meaning concepts are introduced when your child is ready and prepared to learn them. They focus on the fundamental skills students need to prepare for the future, and the amount of content included is more balanced, meaning there's time to teach, and standards don't have to be rushed to get everything covered. Most importantly, the new standards empower students and teachers, and allow parents to be more involved in their child's education. We know that with the old standards, parents sitting down at the kitchen table trying to help their child with math homework, practice, and projects often encountered roadblocks. We heard you when you stressed the need for a more practical approach. The new standards are Georgia-owned and Georgia-grown, and students can solve problems in the way that makes sense to them. There is no mandate from the state to use certain methods, and teachers and parents have the freedom to tailor instruction to the way students learn best. Just as quality teachers make a huge difference in a child's education, a parent's ability to be involved has a major impact, too. The new standards were drafted by hundreds of Georgia classroom teachers in partnership with parents, community members, students, business leaders, and experts on education and child development. Teachers will have time to be trained on the new standards and receive new instructional resources, but the flexibility to learn without required new math methods and use traditional math methods is available right now to all students. Throughout this whole process, our teams focused on students. Students, families, and teachers are at the center of everything we do, and together, we can educate Georgia's future.
So did anything resonate with us in the verbiage here?
Yeah, new math.
That, that new math, right? We're moving away from that new math.
Four pages to do two plus two.
Yes, yes. So the flexibility, right? We're not gonna hold teachers accountable for one particular strategy. It's really what, what do the kids hold on to, right? How are they gonna be successful in engaging in this mathematics? So I think teachers will appreciate that. Parents most definitely will appreciate that. So the big, the big why here, right? The DOE, they said they are reimagining K-12 education. And so what does that mean, right? Of course, we want those 21st century skills. That's a big reason here. We want students, again, ready to enter the industry and the workforce with those skills. If you notice, they have students as the focus. That's, that's our job here, right? Students are always the focus. And the goal right here is for students to have those opportunities. So reasoning is a big part of this, right? We're moving to that reasoning and thinking about the flexibility and how we approach the math and our thinking in general. So if you look here, there are key competencies now, and one of my favorite parts as well is the, the third bullet that talks about the learning objectives. So the mathematics is now gonna be introduced, well, our standards will be introduced in a logical progression as opposed to how they are now. So it's a little ambiguity there, because teachers believe that sometimes they follow standards in the order that they are written, which may not necessarily be the case, but moving forward, it will be the case. So I'm, I'm happy about that. And clarity, so a little bit of the research, right? Teacher clarity is a big thing. We're pushing teacher clarity here in Rockdale County Public Schools. When there's clarity, it's shown to advanced kids about two years, right, in their, in their level of learning. So this is a great thing, because now we will really have clear, understandable standards. And I know that even goes back to one of Dr. Oates' priorities, which is us having that common understanding of our standards. So very pleased with the changes that we're having. So here's our timeline. We will be implementing next year, 2023-2024. We have already started to expose our teachers to some of the big shifts that are happening, and we will continue that training throughout. If you notice, the reasoning, these are our new big ideas that come with our standards. And if you notice, there's a lot of reasoning here in the titles themselves. The DOE has provided our curriculum maps. They're, they're focusing on interdisciplinary connections, which I think will be great for our students as well throughout each of the units, as well as still enforcing those mathematical practices. And here's just a layout of the standards as they are written with the supports that will be embedded. So we have the big idea, we now have the standard, we have learning objectives, and then the evidence of student learning. As well as instructional supports. So we will definitely be referencing these as we continue with our professional learning opportunities. All right, so big shift. One big shift is the mathematical modeling framework. So I'm gonna give a little, a pre-test. You could indulge me for a minute here. So if you have your phone, if you can, anyone in the room, if you would like to take out your phone and access this QR code, and tell me what comes to mind when you think of mathematical modeling. Remember, this is one of our big shifts. And I know we have some other math people in the room, so I would love to see their responses. All right. We're good? Responses in? All right, so they're populating. All right. So if we could view results. On the left. In the, yes, I think we'll be able to see it a little bit. All right, so I see concrete representation. You can scroll. Strategies, okay. Showing the map. I love that. All right, and manipulatives, okay? So they're still coming in. All right, okay, exemplars, nice. Okay. All right, well, let's get back, let's get back to our PowerPoint. So let's see what the DOE is saying as far as mathematical, what mathematical modeling is. So what is mathematical modeling? So with what you just saw up here, which one of these pictures do you believe illustrates mathematical modeling? Is it one, two, three, four? Is it all of them? What are we thinking? You wanna show a finger? And I can tell you what most people say. All right.
I'd say probably everything, because there's ever different learners.
Okay, so this is what most people believe to be mathematical modeling, but unfortunately, the DOE is saying, no, 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 this is not mathematical modeling. These are representations, right, which is, we still want this. We definitely want this. So what there are, the shift right now is that there is no mathematical modeling without context, okay? No context equals no mathematical modeling. So yes, I can draw a model to represent my thinking, but this is not mathematical modeling, right? And why? Why do we need this? Because let's think about this. Harry bought 64 watermelons last week. He bought 98 watermelons this week. How many watermelons did Harry buy? Well, where outside of math class is Harry gonna buy 64 watermelons last week and another 98 this week, right? Nowhere, right? Unless he actually has a, he, he works in, he's selling these watermelons somewhere. So we want to bring the relevance to our students, right? We want them to, to really be able to connect with the mathematics that they are learning. All right? And so the DOE has provided a framework, again, focusing with those 21st century skills at, at the core, where we will engage in that mathematical framework of thinking, okay? So students are gathering the information, they're creating models, analyzing, evaluating, and exploring in its cyclical process. All right, and just a little bit more details. So why is this necessary? Well, we want high engagement. We want high authenticity, right? Usually, we, we, we are, we've learned, right, with procedural mathematics, most of us, in isolation. But it's been proved that without that mathematical modeling, without that conceptual understanding, well, we're gonna have low engagement and less authenticity. So we want to move up this scale here. Another big shift is our statistical reasoning framework, which really is mathematical modeling tied to a data and statistics standards, right, to, to make it simple. And so they've also provided the steps for the framework as well. So those are two of our big shifts, the statistical reasoning framework, as well as the mathematical modeling framework. And here's the layout of the documentation that, the, the guiding documents that they provided. All right. So with that being said, new standards, come new courses, come new pathways for our high school students, as well as new opportunities for our middle school students. And so this is important, because next year, everything will change over. There'll be no grandfathering in of any of our courses. Here are the new names of the courses. Our high school students will still be required to take three courses before they can take that fourth-year elective option. And we have more access here and more choices as far as those fourth-year courses are concerned. And the DOE is excited to say that the high school acceleration can happen at multiple points now. So this chart right here that we have shared with our leaders is really important, because right now, we want them to start thinking about who is going to be ready for what next year, right? Let's thinking about some opportunities. So there are some decision points here. In the past, we have identified students as fifth graders, and they would accelerate for sixth and seventh, and they would have the options to take a high school course in eighth grade. That is no longer the case. We will not start identifying them in fifth grade. We will now give everyone the option to take sixth and seventh-grade math, and if they believe they are ready, right, if parents, teachers, the students themselves, we want to empower them to make some decisions. If they believe they are ready, then they will have the options to take an enhanced course, which will give them that Carnegie option. Okay? Same thing will happen at the end of ninth grade. If they want to accelerate, they will have an option there, as well as at the end of the 10th grade. And really, what this does is opens up access for those higher-level courses and even that college mathematics. And we've provided some guidance for where they are now, where they will roll into next year as far as courses, course selection. We will still offer the supports. They can take them in conjunction with their other classes. All right, so what's to come? Just to know what we, just so I can, you know, briefly on what we've been doing here. We're trying to develop a mathematics cadre, and we've started to identify some teacher leaders. Some of them have actually started to redeliver. We sent a few teachers to a math conference this summer, and they got the training. So they have started to redeliver in their buildings, and we will continue to grow the capacity of our teachers in that regard. We will present the statistical reasoning framework in October. We're partnering with Metro Research to do that, as well as the teacher cadre, giving them some professional learning sessions. Now, a big part of this will be our learning resource adoption, because with new standards, we, we would need some new resources to roll those standards out, as well as curriculum design and assessment revision. And so with that being said, I'm going to leave you with a little bit of comedy. We are hoping that the clarity in our new standards will clear up some misconceptions, and we won't have these situations moving further.
Divided between the five of us, Year Duck, Crowbar, myself, Tom, and the baby. That makes 5% for each one of us.
Ha, 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 Billy, you're cheating yourself. If there's 25% divided among the five of you, that's 14% apiece.
Oh, no, listen, Pa. I, I wouldn't cheat you. You know I wouldn't. Now, look, look here. I'll show you. Let me rub this out here. And, no, 25 divided by 5 is 5. You see, 5 won't go into 2, will it? No. But 5 goes into 25, 5 times, you see?
You're wrong, Billy. Now, now, I'm a pretty good mathematician. Now, 5 into 25, 5 won't go into 2, will it?
No.
But 5 goes into 5 once. Now, we didn't use the 2 before, so we put it down here. Now, 5 into 20 goes 4 times. There you are. 5 into 25, 14.
No, look, Pa. Let me prove it to you now. By multiplication, 5 times 5, 5 times 5 is 25.
I'm surprised you're learning. I'm surprised that you're learning. Now, I'll show you. 5 times 14 is 25. 5 times 4 is 1. 5 times 1 is 5. 25. That's it.
No, no, look, Ma. See, look, you're, you're wrong there, because, you know, I'll, I'll prove it to you. We put down 4, 5 14s here. 14, 14, 14, there. Now, now, I'll prove to you by addition, that, that 5 14s is not 25. 4, 8, 12, 16, 20.
21, 22, 23, 24. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. There you are. Better brush up, Billy. I don't want to see you boys cheated.
All right, so we are hoping we won't have any of that happening in Rockdale County Public Schools, because the standards will be clear, the instruction will be clear, and we will have multiple strategies that we can select from. Any questions for me before I?
I have a question. Math has always been a passion of mine, and I've always wanted, this is Mandy's personal opinion, as to be like, single-subject math, algebra, geometry, and then it changed, I fall back, and it was coordinate algebra, which had a lot. Is this kind of going back towards single-subject math, or is it still?
Somewhat, yes.
Different subjects.
They're shifting some things around, not totally, but so like, even with the eighth-grade course, that coordinate algebra, that was more of a mix. They're sticking more to the linear, and then in the next course, they will focus more on like quadratic. So they're trying to shift some things around.
So the next course will be next year, like?
This will start next year, yes.
Like with the next course, the geometry would not be in the same as the algebra that I'm asking.
So coordinate algebra is going away. So we will have algebra concepts and connections, and then we will have geometry concepts and connections, and then advanced algebra. So there is somewhat somewhat of a crosswalk, but they've moved some things around, so.
I I think I'd like to follow up with Mandy to say that this is not clear, clarity? I'm sorry. I have a ton of questions. I don't think.
Okay, you don't have time.
Not tonight, no. I'd like to, I'd like to request a follow-up on this presentation, because it is not clear. And my only question for you, was there an answer to ninety-eight plus sixty-eight?
No, I'm sorry, what?
You know, in the presentation, it gave us how many watermelons, ninety-eight plus sixty-eight. Was there an answer to that? Because it seems like it is now unclear whether the students can actually just add ninety-eight.
No, 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 yeah, they can definitely add. That that was not the point of the presentation. The point was that we just want them to have something that they can hold on. So maybe I have, you know, twenty Pokemon cards and sixty Pokemon cards. It's just the relevance piece of it. That that was the, that was it. So no, they are still going to be able to, if they want to add all their tens, and then add all their ones, or they want to say, I'm adding fifty, and then I'm adding the eight, the eighteen with the sixty, and then I'm adding one. So it, they'll still be able to use all the strategies. That was definitely not the point of it. Yes.
Okay.
So will our, I have questions. Will our teachers need to be able to teach it in several different ways, based on all the different learners?
Yes, they're still, that is the expectation. So if you saw in the guiding documents that they will be provided with the strategies, the DOE has identified these are the strategies that are suggested. So they are still going to be expected to show the multiple strategies, but students will not be assessed on a particular strategy. As far as now, we might have a bar model that they have to look at the model, and they have to do the math according to the model, and then they are assessed on that. So no, they're going to be assessed on doing the math however they they hold on to, whatever strategies they hold on to. So there's. Yes. Right, right.
Like, well, I get the same answer.
Exactly.
There's nothing wrong with this way, Mom. That's not the way we do it. You're doing it wrong. And I'm saying, well, this is the easier way to get the answer, you know?
So, right, right, exactly, yeah.
I really like knowing that we are moving away from that new math, and that we can be a little bit more flexible on the 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 different ways that we can get get to the final answer.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm thankful for that, too. I I really want to see us get more towards the model that you get in college, which goes back to the basic, like, college algebra.
We know that when the child finishes addition and subtraction and moves on to multiplication and division, and then from there, we move on to algebraic equations, and yeah, I'd like a follow-up on the sequence.
Yes, and.
I'm here. I am here.
I've I've been, I've been here, and and the term she's looking for, we went through QCC, then we went through GPS, and, you know, so we we, you know, that paid attention to the acronyms that we've gone over over the course of years. We just want to know what the kids are going to learn sequentially, so that when they get to the collegiate years, that it actually is making sense when they start putting those pieces together.
Absolutely. And so that is some of the guidance that they provided with the, actually, they've provided a clear progression, which we've never had before as well. So they have the progressions, those are posted, as well as those actual examples and strategies for each of the elements in there, with what they're calling learning objectives.
And Nancy, what I'll do is get with you and get with Shirley, because we we may want to do some follow-up, small group board briefings, where you can go into greater detail and answer specific questions they may have, and that that can work really well sometimes in a smaller group.
Absolutely, yes. The the short time was a hard, like, hard time to fill all that.
But yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Office of Student Support Services with Ms. Michelle Smith. And Ms. Carletta. And Ms. Carletta Smith.
Yes. Oh, yes. You can keep them up there. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to see them, too.
Good evening. As Dr. Smith Dixon just said, you do not have Ms. Michelle Smith. You have Carly DeSigmund. I will try to do her justice and give you the information that she has asked me to do. So I am here, well, good evening, everyone, to the board and all visitors. I am here to give you information and an update on the twenty-first century careers. I'm sorry, Lord, let me, let me slow down. Twenty-first century communities and schools. So I am going to ask my sister to go through the PowerPoint, and then we are Rockdale Bridges Program After School Program. Thank you. So again, we are Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers, and we are at Salem Memorial and Peaks Chapel Elementary. I got a lot of animations on my slides. I do apologize. So at Peaks Chapel, we have a hundred students. We are slotted for a hundred students. They meet from three to six. At Memorial, we are slotted for thirty students. They are, they have a morning program, because they get out so late. We don't have them meet from four fifteen to seven fifteen, because they have to meet for three hours. So we do a morning of an hour from seven fifteen to eight fifteen, and in the evening from four fifteen to six fifteen. And then at Salem, we are slotted for thirty students, and they meet from three forty-five to six forty-five, Monday through Thursday. This is our mission and vision, and in just generic terms, really what it is, just in simplicity, we are here for the kids to support everything they need to help for progression academically, socially, and everything thereafter, so that they are progressive in their life after high school when they graduate. So our program goal goals, we have three of them. The first one is to improve. Pretty much, we are to improve academically and mathematics and ELA or reading. In any student that has attended more than thirty days, it used to be thirty days, but they're kind of shifting away from it to just as time, because you might make a shift in a student over an hour or two hours, so they're kind of actually shifting from the amount of days to the amount of time that they're actually in the program. The next one is to in, increase positive student development. We all know with the, with COVID and everything, social emotional learning is very important. For me, for them, for y'all, for everyone, it's just a lot going on in the world. They don't know how to deal with it. We don't know how to deal with it, so we're trying to help them be progressive citizens. The last one is to increase parent engagement. We know just throughout the county, we want our parents to be there for them. When we call, we hope that they answer the phone. All of those things is all across the board. These are our main three goals. Of course, we do other things throughout the school year as well, but these are the main three goals that we focus on. So just to go over some glows that we have at all, because this is our fourth year in the program. Thank you. This is our fourth year in the program. It is a five-year grant. We are in year four. So some glows for Peaks, because we have had some trying times. So I have been with the program since the first year at Salem. I started off as site manager. I am now the instructional leader, so I help with everything, lesson plans, making sure the teachers have what they need, making sure that the students have their resources and everything. But just some glows for Peaks, they have a huge increase in social emotional learning skills. You're going to see that on all the slides, because we have actually just tried to integrate that with whatever it is, whether it's a student that is having some behavioral problems. We actually have hired the PNI specialist at Salem to actually work with the students. He rotates around as much as he can to go have those tough conversations, because we have learned they do not know how to communicate with us, especially with their peers. They do not know how to communicate really very well. Project-based learning at the elementary school level, this is amazing, because what they do is not do just basic little tasks. Here's two plus two equals four, as somebody said. We actually do projects to 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 foster that information. So right now, they're actually doing sewing, but they're learning how to measure something to then, of course, add on to those math skills or division or whatever it is. So they're doing full-on sewing, sewing lessons at Peaks. The attendance, we started very low. We actually did a amendment to the grant. We started with only forty-five students written for Peaks, but we have changed that to a hundred, and they have steadily kept seventy-plus students after school. And it's a lot to say for three hours, that they're there doing activities, learning information, and and loving what they do at Peaks. At Memorial, again, like I said, you're going to see that on all slides. The main thing is helping them just to be able to make it throughout the day. Another thing, they have a very large increase in parent engagement at Memorial. So when they do, it's it's been a tough situation, because of course, there was a timeframe that we cannot have parents come in the building just for safety, for COVID. But they have a lot of parents that actually show up now that we have moved back into that, that actually show up for those parent engagements, whether it's virtual, because some of our 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 stuff is virtual, just to make it easier for the parents, because we do know that 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 a lot of our parents work in the evening, so we do some virtual activities as well. And then the consistency of attendance in the morning program. To get a student to come to school an hour early, to show up, to learn math and English, and and whatever it is, is is pretty much impossible. But they have a consistency of of a decent amount of students that show up. So we worked, of course, we know students and parents, they have to drop some students off early. So we have worked with those parents. Your student does not have to now stand outside for all of this time. They can come in and actually get some academic help. They also help and work with the athletic department as well, because of course, they're going to practice right after school. So those kids come early as well. For Salem, and this is my baby, because that's where I work. But of course, again, with increased social and emotional, and then we have an improved collaboration with the athletic department. And I'm going to just feed into that. We also have a very huge partnership with communities and schools. I'm going to go over that in an in another slide. And then we have almost tripled since pre-pandemic attendance retention. So with that is, is that we started off, we might have had a student that might have stayed with us for for ten, fifteen days, and then they might drop off. But we literally have students that have started on August the eighth, and then they stay all the way until April, the end of April. Our program is not short. It goes from the beginning of the school year into the end of the school year. Three hours for a high school student? That's a lot, but go ahead. Thank you. So just to give you guys some important dates that we have coming up, I'm very excited about Lights On After School. I will send some information over to the board about it. But Lights On After School was started in a in a school in Chicago. What they did was they had a very high crime rate. So what they did was they started a program that was after school, Lights On After School. And when they started that during that school year, they had no, they had a very high death rate with their students. They had no shootings and no students killed during that time. So it actually is a nationwide thing now, and we, it is the fourth Thursday of October, so it's next Thursday, and each school is doing something different. Peaks is doing like a carnival. Memorial, they actually switched it up. They're doing a scavenger hunt, but they're actually doing a genealogy with the parents. So they're doing family trees. So they're working on that, and then the parents are going to come, and they're going to actually create their family tree. And then at Salem, they're doing an escape room, and sorry, they're doing a kickball versus teacher versus student that night. Because last year, we had to change it because it rained, so they're doing like a a fall festival, because it's so close to Halloween as well. And then, of course, we do a second one in March, just to kick off to get ready for, of course, all these in-course tests, finals, end of the school year, and we'll do a spring festival, parent event, and advisory council. We do one every semester in advisory council, but that's going to be our major when we get feedback from our parents, from the community, on what do they need? Are we giving the students what they need in the after-school program? So again, these are our partnerships that we have. We are building on that greatly. We have communities and schools that started this year. It is amazing. She is doing an amazing job. So she has a caseload, but any student on her caseload, she then refers to us, because pretty much if they need help in anything social, they're more social economics. But when they, when they have that, they also need, of course, behavior, they might need something else. So then she sends them, refers them to us. We have a partnership that we are starting with Bold Ministries, that they are going to be providing full meals for our students in the evening, because again, they are there for three hours a day. They are hungry people. The the snack that they get is not enough, so they're going to come and actually provide a full meal, hot or cold, depending on what it is. Of course, the District Attorney's Office, we are starting a partnership with them that will start next week as well. We have Making the Transition, Sigmund Family Farm, yes, that is my family. We have a farm in East Georgia that my parents do. We wanted them to actually come out to see what a full-fledged farm. Looks like we have a cattle farm, so they are a partner as well. Lighthouse Bible Fellowship, Camp Connect, they are a group that we bring in, and they do more hands-on projects. That's the the projects that we do at Peaks. So we use them as well. Restoration Storehouse, I'm pretty sure some of you guys have heard of that, and then the Rotary Club of Rockdale County. We're going to show a short student testimonial video of the students that we have, and this is across all schools.
My name's Kyltham. I'm in seventh grade, and this is my third years of Bridges. The reason I like Bridges so much is because it helps my mom, because she works like, and also it helps me with my grades, since I am having trouble with ELA, and that's the only subject that I know I have trouble with. But Bridges is a place for kids that are willing to stay here and do good things. And if you are not willing to do that, I don't suggest you do Bridges, because Bridges is a program where you stay here so you can finish unfinished work and also learn new things.
Well, I've been in this program for two years now, and my mental health and my grades have never been any better. The environment of this program is not only supportive, but it's also sweet and it's kind. I can truly be myself without feeling neglected, without feeling like I'm doing anything wrong. We laugh a lot, but we also get our work done. Teachers within the program are very much so helpful, and I feel like I can't, couldn't really have done any of this without them. I am in dance, and that requires me to be half-practice for three hours, maybe four hours, five days a week after school, with games, long games on Fridays. And without the Bridges program, I would have never been able to juggle my sports life with my academic life and my actual life, because I also have work.
Hi, my name is Zion Evans, and I'm with the Rockdale Bridges Program. And that program is special, I could say. My grades have been, never been better, and I may met some friends along the way. For example, ninth grade, I had some bad grades before, but thanks to Rockdale Bridges, my grades have never been better. Because now I have four point oh on my GPA. So.
So that was just a short video to show some of our students. We do have a lot. I I couldn't do all of their testimonials, because that would have taken us all night to do. But from here, I'm going to let that.
And so as you can see how inspiring that was and the excellent leadership that we have even in Mrs. Michelle Smith's absence. And she has been so intentional with building capacity in the program. She shared recently that Carlita knows about seventy percent of what she does, so we are building that internal excellence. And so tonight, we're actually bringing this action item, because we will be asking the superintendent to rec. because we will be asking the superintendent to recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education will accept the FY twenty-three, Neder M. Lowey Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center Grant. And so it is important to note that we're in the fourth year of a five-year grant. It is one grant, but we have allowed that grant to support, uh, Peaks as well as Memorial and as well as Salem. And so it is also exciting that initially the state advised us that they would be reducing the amount of the grant for this year. And in the ninth hour, came back and actually, um, add that additional amount to the grant. And so we'd be accepting the grant in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight. And so we're excited about the work. We're excited about the opportunity to have the additional funds and what it could mean for doing work here in Rockdale. I've also had conversations with, uh, Mrs. Michelle Smith about what does this mean for the future? And I'm sure that may be a question that you have as well. And so when you're in the fourth of a fifth-year grant, what does that look like? And so we're already talking about, um, when and if it is available. Um, really trying to go slow to go fast, to actually write, uh, maybe ask for permission to write a grant to move forward, to continue this work. And so I think you can definitely tell from the testimonies that, um, it is effective. It is working, obviously, when our children are with us before care, after care. The bottom line is we know where they are. They're being fed, they're being taken care of, and their needs are definitely, uh, being met. So we'd like to see this opportu- opportunity continue to grow across the district.
Thank you ladies so much.
Um, are there any questions or, or anything for, for me?
I have something.
Yes.
Carlita, I just want to commend you on your work. I've seen you in action. I didn't know it was the Bridges Program at the time, now I know.
That was, that was actually, um, FBLA.
Yes, and so, um, Dr. Oats and I happened to go to one of the events that you guys were having over at Salem. And some high school students were just, I was just so impressed with them. And she was their mentor or their teacher.
Mom.
Mom, yes. And I will have to let you know that one of the students there now has an intern with one of the organizations I'm connected with. But I was so impressed with those students, um, and how they represented Salem High School. And I want to say, I just appreciate your work. I wanna know, how can I help, how can I support? And I want to, the story to be told to more people in our community. So we'll know that we are doing excellent things. And I have witnessed it and I'm impressed and I just wanna thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, and I did leave the picture books, uh, Ms. Michelle, Mrs. Michelle Smith told me I have to bring those back to her. Um, we are gonna get you guys a copy, but I have to bring those.
Okay.
Did anybody else have any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you guys for what you do, it's so important. So from your presentation, it looked like that the students would go four days a week, Monday through Thursday for three hours. But yet you mentioned that they could do athletics too. So, um, how does it work if like they're at a high school or middle school level and they're, they have football or whatever practices after? Do they go to that practice and then come? So they're missing three hours or how's that work?
I could explain it, but I'm gonna let my, um, my sister come up, because she actually works with those students, um, hands-on at Salem. So I'm gonna let her explain.
Yes.
Hello.
Um, so it typically just depends on, I, so I speak to coaches first, because what I don't wanna do is not communicate and make sure that nobody's missing from where they're supposed to be. Um, so typically they, for football or basketball, they come to me first, because those practices typically last longer than our program does at six fifty, six forty-five at Salem. So they'll come to me an hour, even the young lady that spoke about dance, they practice almost all matching with us. So she comes to us until about four-thirty, five o'clock, and then she will go to bands. Like one of her teammates will message her and say, we're headed outside, so she'll leave. Um, and then with basketball, I've even had, one year we had the entire team come with us. And they actually did their study hall with us. And then after the hour and a half or whatever they had built in through the coach, they would then transition to football practice or basketball practice. So it just depends on what the coach needs us to do, just so we can work together. Because staying in from three to six and having to go home and work on three hours of schoolwork is just a lot. So we're trying to alleviate that, not having to be up until ten, eleven, twelve, not getting any sleep, cause we have had that happen. And we easily have it with kids with jobs, not just with athletics. Um, we actually had a student that got a job with us. Um, he works at Walmart as the online checkout. He doesn't have to deal with people, he doesn't like people. So all he does, if you see the people, you go into Walmart and just walk around with the carts, filling up online orders. That's all he does and he's been doing that for about two years. And he absolutely loves it. So it's, it, not just with athletics, it helps with anything extracurricular outside of Salem.
That's great. I'm thankful to hear that you guys are flexible enough to let them be involved in athletics too, because you're helping them all around, so that's, that's excellent.
Yes ma'am, we also work with, um, open campus, um, because of course, we know how transient that is. So we have students, of course, they're housed at Salem, but they go to open camp. Them, cause of course, we know when they go over there, they see this, they see the teachers, they don't know them. So they don't have that relationship, um, as, as much as we do. So we actually have that as well, to where they don't actually go over to open campus in the afternoon, uh, for night school. They might stay with us and we can still check their work and everything. And we, we saw, um, three or four students last year that might not have finished, uh, courses they did. And we had one student that finished like four courses, um, in one semester. That was not slated to graduate, but he did.
That's awesome. Any other questions? I think Heather had a question.
Yes ma'am.
A question for you, how do you guys select the, um, the students for the program?
Yes ma'am, so students are recommended to us by, um, teachers, parents, a parent can call, administration. Um, if we see someone in our courses, of course. Um, and then the students, of course, say, ooh, have you heard about Bridges? So it just depends, we take them from everywhere we can.
And my second question was, um, y- your partnerships with the different, um, community entities? How, like how do they fit into that? Um, so for example, I just became a member of the board on Rockdale, um, Restoration Storehouse. How do we, um, what kind of support do we provide to you guys?
Um, so it just depends, we have three different ways. It's usually in-kind, monetary, or with time. Um, so for example, my, my parents do a lot of in-kind. So if we have anything going on, um, we were gonna go, for example, we were gonna go to visit the, the farm and they were gonna do like a full tour and show them how the process works, um, and not charge anything. Um, so that would've been in-kind. Um, it just depends, um, some people will call and will say, okay, we have, uh, uh, Lights On After School coming up. We would like to provide a meal for the kids, just to show them our appreciation. So we then might call Restoration Storehouse and say, would you like to provide pizza? Um, it just depends on what it is. Um, but for board, like for example, Board Ministries, um, Bold Ministries, I'm sorry. We went and talked to her and that's how we got, cause they have a grant that they wanted to work with Salem to provide meals, cause that's one of their huge things that they do. And that's how we got, um, in, in, in touch with them.
You?
Yes ma'am.
Again, thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I just want to thank you again. I'll echo what everyone said, thanks for your tremendous commitment. I know the commitment that you're making and you've been committed from the beginning.
Thank you.
And it's, uh, in no small part to your commitment, which owes to the success of the program, certainly at your school, but I know you are having a much broader impact, uh, because Michelle is building that capacity.
Yes she is, yes she is.
Indeed, indeed, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Office of Operational Services, Mr. Boonseek.
Good evening, Madam Chair, North, Vice Chair Brown, Board members, and Dr. Oats. Before I get started on my, uh, few action items that we have for tonight, let me give you a little update on last week's, uh, fall break. While, uh, s- some students were away and some staff were away, our crews were working very, very diligently. It's a very productive week usually for us and we laid a lot of playground vaults at several schools. Uh, we re-screened the gym floors at our high school and middle schools. We did some, uh, restriping on parking lots, actually, uh, six of our elementary schools and two of our middle schools, we got that accomplished, uh, replaced carpet at, uh, four, five, five of our schools. And, uh, then with the HVAC and the major projects, CMR one and two, that we're still working on, where we've got the roofing going on at Rockdale County High School. Finally, the product's all in and they're making good progress. And likewise at Salem High School, and they put in some, uh, big HVAC units last week while, uh, students were off campus. So had a lot of good progress last week and we're thankful for the good weather we had and, uh, for the, for the team being diligent and focused on keeping our, uh, schools focused and good environment for us for teaching and learning. This is our young ladies share with us, what an awesome, awesome job. So I have a first action item tonight is that, uh, Superintendent will recommend MBA Consulting Engineers for the Sims Elementary School and Hightower Elementary School renovations and modifications that is driven by our state DOE. Uh, Bruce, uh, realized that we had some money sitting there that we were eligible for. So he applied for it and, uh, so this will get the, the ball rolling with that. Uh, it will upgrade our lighting, HVAC systems, fire alarm systems, ceilings, allows us to upgrade aged equipment and control systems that are way out of, uh, well, they've been there since, uh, the schools were built. So it's a good opportunity for us to move forward. Uh, the architect's fee is five percent, that's from our standard lineup we have there. And the total cost, uh, will be dependent upon what those projects end up being when I bring those action items to you later on this school year. The next one is the, uh, painting, summer painting. We again are painting on our seven-year rotation. We do have four schools this summer, Rockdale County High School and Salem are huge projects. And then we also have Magnet and CJ Hicks, which that's one of our biggest elementary schools. So recommending that, uh, Howard Baker and Associates are the architect for this. And it's gonna be seventy-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-four dollars, and that will be from East Ploss Five. The next one is the school bus purchase. Uh, the regular funding for the DOE. I brought you a s- exact, uh, request back in June, I think it was, um, for purchasing eight buses. We're kinda breaking down, they've, they've given us twenty-four buses overall for the next three years. And, uh, we might have should've bought the rest of them tonight, because the price of the buses tonight versus the ones we just ordered is a fourteen percent increase in the cost of buses. And that's with the discount that, uh, we get through the state and through Freightliner in this particular case. So Superintendent will recommend that Thomas Freightliner be the one we purchased eight buses for. Again, the state allows eighty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-ten dollars for per bus. And the difference will come out of East Ploss Five. And it's the same contract number that I share with you. You see the two cost differences there from the state and what Thomas is offering us. And it's normal buses that we've been purchasing, uh, the last few years. The total from Georgia Department of Education will be seven-hundred-and-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-eight dollars. And then out of East Ploss Five, two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-twelve dollars to purchase these buses. And again, we have eight more. And right now my plan is to bring those to you probably in February. Hopefully catch this current price that's going on and save us some money there. Uh, upgrade pavilions on our Rockdale County sites. We have a total of nine pavilions, uh, scattered across the county. Uh, most of them at our elementary schools and then at Conyers and Edwards. And we have one here that used to be, when this used to be Pine Street. And, uh, as the recommendation is that we will, we have selected ICS Incorporated as a contractor of choice for the upgrades for these pavilions. Uh, they are the lowest of three bids submitted for a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-three dollars. Uh, this is to fix these backups for community and for our, for our students to use. There's been no work done on them. They were built in the nineteen-nineties and this will be from East Ploss Five funding. School and security cameras for our district. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of risk response teams as a contractor of choice for the purchase and installation of one-hundred-and-fifty-four IP digital cameras across the, across the district. This will be a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-two, ninety-two dollars and twenty-four cents from East Ploss Five. And what we're doing, these, this number of cameras is purchased to fill out the banks from the cameras, IP cameras we purchased with the safety grants, uh, just a couple of years ago. So this fills those banks out. Uh, we are working on, uh, replacing all of our old analog cameras with IP cameras. And this works, this gets that, keeps that ball rolling. And we will be continuing to bring some more of these to you to finish this up with our East Ploss Five funding and get the new cameras within our district.
Phil, I, I previously shared with the board, but I think, I think a board member, Jackson, let it ask about the, how we were gonna be rotating out those analogs and replacing them with IP. And so this is what you're addressing right now.
This is that, so the first thing is taking care of the banks, filling those banks. Then the next area that we've addressed, uh, safe, school safety is brought to me for approval is that we will look at the high, high-traffic areas, commons areas, uh, you know, where, where, where large groups congregate. And then we will, we will work with the ones that are having the most problem with their analog cameras. For example, when Derek was in, um, RCA the other day, he just noticed, as he's passing by checking something else, uh, banker cameras, um, were not working, they're all analog cameras. And so that's one of those first high priorities is coming to get those back up and rolling. But we do have, still have a few of those in inventory. And they're harder to find, to replace cameras that are not working. But we've gotta get the old analog out of, out of our system and go with the IP. And so we're driving hard on that. And, uh, between now and June, I hope to bring several action items to get these cameras in place and, and get them rolling. Thank you. Uh, the next one is the HVAC replacement, the old nine-fifty-four Main Street board, uh, board room. The Superintendent will recommend that, uh, this, uh, conditioning air systems be the contractor of choice to replace the HVAC unit in that building, sixty thousand, five-hundred-and-four, forty dollars. Uh, this is part of an old system that's obsolete and it does tie into a few units of ours. And this will be East Ploss Five funding. Then I have the MOU from Georgia Piedmont Technical College classroom leased space. Uh, the Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve GPTC memorandum of understanding paying thirty-eight thousand, sixty-four dollars and nine cents per month for the refurbished leased classroom space in the RCA pod. The document is subject to review by the Superintendent and General Counsel. I share with, uh, Mr. Flanagan tonight that they have accepted just a few, a few minutes before our board meeting, the language that he's updated and corrected in that MOU, which will be to you for next week for, for signatures. As you know, we moved a pod there from what is currently the epic, uh, campus. We totally revamped, renovated it and prepared it for, for their classrooms. Primary classrooms were gonna be the line, lineman, uh, training and some health classes going in there. Uh, I don't know if Dr. Holston updated you and you guys talked this week or not, but they're having a difficult time finding, uh, instructors for, for lineman classes. So, uh, it's not taking off as quickly as we wanted to, but the building's ready there. We've not put the pole field in, because once they get an instructor, it's just a matter of bringing the truck in and they have, we already have the pole field outlined, it's a matter of putting the poles up. So that work will happen very quickly. So this is financial impact will be four-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, uh, for fiscal year payment to us from GPTC. And as soon as we get this, uh, this is approved and the MOU is, uh, again reviewed by Mr. Counsel and we'll start collecting our money. They're ready, first check will be from July up till whenever we get this thing signed. Looking forward to getting that money back in our pockets, right Keith? Then the last one is school safety, uh, it's the Open Gate Weapons Detection System. You've been apprised of how this thing works. The Superintendent will recommend that we purchase twenty-four Open Gate Weapons Detection System devices and hardware for three-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-twelve dollars through the TIPS Contract twenty-two oh one oh five for technology solutions and products and services. The rationale is, as is laid out there, is to have at the high school and middle school, three detection units. Uh, one device at RCA, the current three devices that we have and deployed, which we are using just this week at elementary schools, will be used by our team to circulate around, uh, around the district or different elementary schools randomly. Again, this is East Ploss Five funding. I believe that concludes my few action items. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Um, why do we need architects for painting?
Because, uh, well, first of all, because the state gets involved with that too, to make sure we're doing what we're right. But they, they line up all the specs that are required, they check off all those specs. Mr. Baker earns his keep when we're, when we're doing this. Make sure we have the right type of paints and that there's no, no defects to those things, so yeah.
And I know you've probably addressed this before, but are we getting, um, rent income from Georgia Military College? Like we are from Georgia.
The MOU calls when we get to a certain student number enrolled, which we're not there yet. Well, we just kicked off, we enjoyed that new opening. Uh, I don't remember, Madam Chair, what that number is, but there's, it's...
I'll share that information with our board, uh, this week. But yeah, there's a, a ten enrollment threshold, at which point we begin to get so much per square.
Um, per, per FT, I think it is, Dr. X, I can't remember.
Well, I'll follow up with you.
You know, our, our greatest excitement about that is the opportunity it brings to our kids. I mean, we bus kids there. I mean, we bus kids there just like we do everywhere else, giving them every opportunity to get their education. And I love, I love that opportunity and it's hoping and praying that goes very well for us and for them.
I will share, Phil, while you're up there on GMC, that General Caldwell, the president, emailed me yesterday and said he had made a pop visit over and was just thoroughly, and you may have been copping on that, but he was thoroughly impressed with what's going on there, both from a facilities perspective and more substantively in terms of, of our busing our students there and what they're getting started with student enrollment.
And again, that busing, as, as we've done so often with these routes, I've always said if you keep the wheels rolling and keep kids moving, we're earning to keep with that bus. So those buses are on a route back, are, are dropping kids off on a route the other direction or taking them back to their home campus. So it's not a matter, we just go out and create special routes that's costing us a lot of extra money. We're, we're piggybacking on things that we've got rolling and that's a design we want to keep rolling. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next is Office of Financial Services, Mr. Keith Hall.
Alrighty, good evening, Madam Chair North, Madam Chair Vice Brown, Dr. Rose, members of the board. I'll be going over the preliminary financial statements for September. And I also have one action item as well. All right, the revenue for the month of September is 9.2 million, 26.6 million year to date, which is 14.7% of our budget. Last year we received 9.5 million in September, 27.2 million year to date, which was 15.8% of our budget. Expenditures, 15.8 million for September, 45.1 million year to date, which is 24.4% of our budget. Last year in September, we received 14.4 million, 41.3 million year to date, which was 24% of our budget. Our outstanding encumbrances are $2,676,194 for September. Keep in mind, we are at the 25% period of our budget, a quarter of the way through. So the 25%, I always like to look and see where our expenses are so we're under that number. So that's a good, that's good. Our fund balance at the end of September is 20.1 million approximately. Last year we were at 14.8 million approximately. Our assets are a little over 22 million, our liabilities a little over 2 billion, which our third-party payments that will be cleared up. And then our fund balance at 20.1 million. And our action item deals will approve in the Title I budget. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt the FY23 Title I proposed budget as presented. All schools will be served Title I funds as in the, as they were in the previous year. And the financial impact is $4,902,725. That is the award. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is superintendent's update.
Just, yes ma'am, Madam Chairwoman, just a few announcements. Want to thank our board for your engagement during the Board Institute earlier this week. We were very pleased and, and we're thankful for the Carl Vincent Institute of Government with their emergent ethics thinking preferences, training as well as the Georgia Department of Education's Director of Accountability, as well as Chris Dennis who joined her, who's our accountability specialist and Alan Mueller from the waivers and, and the external affairs department. So very good training there. Speaking of that training, I, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to congratulate this Board of Education for recently, recently being named for a seventh time an exemplary board. I think that warrants applause. That notification came a few, couple of days ago. Of course, that segues into the next discussion where I met today in Lawrenceville at the GSBA headquarters. I'm on the, the GSBA Superintendent's Advisory Council. And one of the main things we focused on is finalizing planning for the upcoming annual GSBA, GSSA winter conference. That'll be November 30th through December 2nd at the Renaissance Waverly Hotel. And in addition to this board being recognized at that conference for the seventh time receiving exemplary board status, also they'll be, they'll be recognizing the leading edge award districts. We have not yet received formal word, but we are very, very hopeful as well for that. And I'll notify the board as soon as that information is shared. I also shared with you previously that GSBA reached out to me and asked if I would present at the upcoming annual GSB, GSSA conference. And of course, in keeping with their protocols, they always encourage and like there to be a joint presentation with superintendent and at least one board member. So I do, I have shared with the board in previous board briefs that Chairwoman North will be co-presenting with me at the pre-conference on November 30th. And they determined the content, which is how we are leveraging our board norms to give us guidance in the area of communication, both our internal communication and our external communication. And then also I've been asked to do a one-hour workshop session on day two of, on the first day of the conference, December 1st. And we're going to be focused on equity leadership in action. And we'll feature and highlight some exemplary practices by this governance team, specifically looking at GMC, looking at telehealth, uh, adoption, as well as looking at our, the meal delivery that took place during this pandemic. So it's really looking at some concrete accomplishments from this governance team in which equity was, was a centerpiece, where we were focused on ensuring equity. Equity of access in terms of higher ed opportunities, in terms of healthcare opportunities, and of course, in terms of meal delivery and continuity during this pandemic. Well, with that, we'll get an opportunity to feature the mini documentary that No Kid Hungry did by virtue of coming in and working with Peggy, our previous executive director of school food services. So we're excited about that. It's always great when GSB reaches out and solicits our, our participation on, on the main annual conference. And so we're excited about that. Also, I'll share with you that we're planning the, I've shared with you previously that COSBA is the new national organization that GSBA and 21 other state board associations are now a part of. It used to be the National School Board Association, but as you know, there were several state board associations that opted to move away from NSBA and, and they started their, COSBA is an acronym for Consortium of School, State School Boards Association, SOCCOSBA. You have to remember all these acronyms that come online. But they're going to have their first national inaugural conference in Tampa, March 30th through April 2nd. And they have also reached out and solicited that I, that we consider a presentation there. So I may be compelled against my best judgment and desire to actually go to Tampa in the spring. So in any event, that's all I have, Madam Chairwoman. I could also point out that I talked about the pre-conference, but the, the workshop conference is going to be an hour long on day one of the conference. And Vice Chairwoman Pam Brown will be co-presenting on that one hour, with me on that one-hour conference on equity leadership in action, exemplary governance team practices. So we're very excited about that.
Any questions for Dr. Rose? If not, the next item on our agenda is the information section. I just want to remind you guys that there are nine items listed that's in the information section posted in assembly for your review before our next meeting next week. Item six is the recess. Is there any need for recess? Okay, we'll move forward. Item seven is to review the pending minutes. We'll be voting on these minutes at our next meeting. Please make sure that you review the pending minutes. Minutes, it's also posted in assembly. There is no old business tonight. There are 12 items for review on, to vote on next week for our regular session. Is there a need for a consent agenda?
I move that we have a consent agenda for items one through 12.
I have a move, is there a second?
Second, Akita Palmer.
Have a motion and second to vote on these next week with a consent agenda. All in favor, raise your hands, please. Motion carries unanimously. There is no board discussion, however, there is a need for executive session for a student disciplinary hearing appeal. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? I have a motion and Heather, your second? I have a motion and second to move into executive session. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously, upon which when we're completed, we'll come back into open session. The board has come back into open session at 7:40 PM. The board has considered all the evidence in the student's self-defense claim, and is there a motion to adopt the following findings. The student did not act in self-defense when the student participated in a group fight with multiple students on March 16th, 2022. The board finds that the student's conduct violated Rule 1.14, disruption and interference with school, of the student code of conduct, and the board adopts the punishment imposed by the Student Disciplinary Hearing Committee on March 30th, 2022. However, the student may return to the student's school zone because the punishment assigned by the Student Disciplinary Committee has expired. I have a motion and second. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. Hold on. Hang on. I need to read. Thanks. So I need to read the parent and then student's rights. You have the right to appeal the board's decision to the State Board of Education pursuant to Official Code of Georgia, Section 20-2-1160. The appeal should be in writing and be filed with Dr. Terry Oats, Superintendent of the Rockdale County Public Schools, within 30 days of the decision of the board. Please see Official Code of Georgia, Section 20-2-1160 for additional information. The board will mail you a copy of the decision. With no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So I'll vote.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we adjourn at 7:43.
Good night.
Good night.